Good evening. The Board now convenes this meeting of the Littleham ISB Board of Trustees in open session on Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty P M. at Zeller Center for Learning Leadership. I am Delion English, President of the Littleham ISB Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I would like to thank and welcome you and all those who are video viewers. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my right is Miss Diane Harding, our Vice President. Trustee Corvitas was unavailable. Trustee Christopher Williams was also unavailable. And Superintendent Dr. Lowell Stride. To my left is sitting Trustee Alex Flores, our Secretary. Trustee Stephanie Gray. And Trustee Melissa Myers. For Superintendent's leadership team, we have President the following. Deputy Superintendent Matthew Gutierrez. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Learning Services Cindy Midman. Chief Primary Officer Grant Anderson. Director of Facilities and Instruction, Rod Reeves. Director for Communication Services and Community Relations, Cat Rogers. The Trustees as a Board and corporate have the special power and duty to govern and oversee the management of the public schools of the district. The Board's responsibility and duty is to assure the public that the district's resources are being used effectively and efficiently. The Board's role and management oversight shall ensure the integrity and performance of all major systems, including what is limited to finance, human resources, technology, transportation, food services, custodial grounds, safety, security, construction management, and facility maintenance. Leadership, management, and operational responsibility are charged by Superintendent of Schools. For the public, this is a working session meeting which allows the Board to discuss the business of the district. For the citizen input proportions of our agenda, the Board has made available public time cards that are accepted at or before regular meeting. Cars are not accepted after the meeting has been started. All cards will be collected and given to the Board Secretary, our Representatives, as President and Speaker during the time. At this time, you can please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, please.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one tribe, one indivisible.
Thank you. For the thirty, we will call please.
Here.
This is Diane Harding, here.
Here.
This is Alejandro Flores.
Here.
This is Stephanie Gray, here.
And this is Dr. Stride, who is our biggest and chief of course director.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will open up for citizen input. We have the citizen input. At six thirty four, we will open the floor for citizen input. At this time, we will call forward Terry Jones, citizen input, and a topic to scan.
Good evening, Dr. Stride and board members. My name is Terry Jones, and I'm a seventh grader at Lakeside Middle School. I've been in the Littleham ISB since kindergarten. I'm a trumpet player in the band and in the athletic program. I recently competed in the U I O one athletic competition. I am also a straight A student, who was one of the first students chosen to be in the competitive math program. The Littleham ISB has welcomed many changes in my eight years as a student. That is why I'm here to talk to you. Last year, when the STEM Academy was open, a decision was made to move labor and broadcast to STEM. I have over two thousand labor breaks in my room, and I was disappointed in the system taking this away from Lakeside Middle School. Now, although the decision has been made to put the separate STEM Academy programs from the majority of students within the school this year, that decision is to completely move the competitive math program to Prestonwood. My options, as presented to me, are either transfer to Prestonwood or to bust to the high school. Either way, I'm being forced to give up either arts or athletics to maintain my academic endeavors. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to some famous people. Roland Atkinson, actor, Bachelor of Electrical Engineering, Oxford. Tom Landry, football coach, Masters of Science, Mechanical Engineering, University of Houston. Arnold Schwarzenegger, actor, Bachelor of Science, Economics, University of Wisconsin. Lisa Kudrow, actress, Bachelor of Science, Biology, Bachelor. Art Grumville, musician, Master in Mathematics, Columbia. Eddie Lamarr, actress, Mathematical Prodigy, first developed frequency hobby, the very system that makes your cell phone secure. Mayim Biyak, actress, best known for being blossom, Ph.D. in Neuroscience, UCLA. If any of these people had attended LEISD, the structure of a complete education on their terms would not have been available. To paraphrase Ronald Bergen, an actor who got his economics degree on an athletics scholarship to Dariq College, Dr. Stride, please stand on these walls between our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jones, thank you. We appreciate your time. Are there any more? There are no more citizen input. At this time, we will close citizen input at six thirty seven. Next up on the Board's agenda, approval of minutes discussing the approved regular minutes meetings of three thirty, two thousand and fifteen. The notification has changed to minutes from three thirty. If there are no changes, we'll call for a motion for approval. Is there a second? There is a second. First and second for approval of minutes for regular meetings for three thirty, two thousand and fifteen. All those who favor, say higher raise your hand. A vote. It's great. Motion here. Next up. Transcript update. This is it.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Stride. My first agenda item is the transcript update. And for the past several years, the district has had issues with transcripts. And this goes back to even when we used the system called Texas. Two years ago, we switched to Focus, and the issues became more prevalent because the course catalog, which is, it's not a paper catalog, we think of, but it's the actual courses and their credits and their P E M S codes and their titles. When it was imported from Texas, it had dirty data in it that was existing in Texas that they had tweaked yearly to make the transcripts work. Focus is a robust system, and it wasn't going to allow the tweaking to occur. And so, last year, all of the transcripts were basically run by hand and approved by hand in order to get them out for the students to graduate. And it was a long and arduous process, probably counselors, administrators, and curriculum staff involved in that. During the summer, we had two counselors that worked on an audit of the course catalog, as I updated you in July and August. We got that finished and updated it into Focus and began running tests. And we have successfully corrected the issue in the course catalog for everything except for little Singleton things such as sub-band, which is, or sub-athletics, where you have a student that gets that waiting for more, the course is waiting for credit for more than two things. For example, they get a band in hand athletics if they're marching band in the fall. So, that's similar, though, in your system. So, we've gone in and hand coded those. Look, we, Focus is built on port for us, where we're able to take down the students that have too many band credits or too many athletic credits, and we're able to go in and change those last credits to local credits. And so, we've done that, and we're very pleased with our transcripts. Our programmer, Brandon, says that if we aren't equal to where we were before we switched over to Focus, we're substantially better with our transcript system. In the fall, we had two hundred and sixty eight students make a request for transcripts, and a total of eight hundred and sixty three transcripts were sent out to post at their institutes. These were done primarily by mail, except to a few colleges that only accept digital. But to go one step further, we have entered into a contract with parchment, which is the company that the NCAA athletics have to go through, as does any of the military organizations. Most of the state colleges and many of the colleges across the nation use parchment. And so, our process now to request a transcript for a student, as you can load a piece of paper, they get it in the guidance office, and they mail out your transcripts. For past students, they have to pay a fee, and then we mail those out. With parchment, all of our students' transcripts will be loaded up, and then they will be sent electronically to the universities. Through, the way parchment works, just like we do, is that current students, the transcripts are free. And then, one month after you're graduating, so about July fifth, any transcript you order then is on a fee basis. It would still be the same cost of the five dollars, but this time, the campus gets back two of that, and parchment keeps three. And then, with us taking that money in, we will be able to pay our contract with parchment every year. So, we'll blow the money in, and then we'll blow it back out to pay for our contract. We think that this will be much more efficient. Are we going to have a transition to this? Yes. We're not going to load every transcript in for previous past students. So, when they, when we get a home for transcript or for parchment, an email that says you have this student that requested one, we will hand load that in and scan it to them so that they load in their system. It'll be there from then on. But, so what we will do is we will load current students' transcripts in next month. We just signed the first order with them. So, that is the step we're heading, and we know it's going to be a benefit for and save time hours for our counselors and our P E M S clerks and rather than registering transfers out. So, we're excited about that. There is no financial impact to the budget for this. It's handled.
Have you heard of any issues within the other institutions that you're using that you can work on?
We have, there is one of the big universities, University of Texas, isn't on board yet, but their subsidiaries are. So, we will continue to have doing paper transcripts with them. But the fact that all of our students have to use it for NCAA and to go into the military, that they could have to do it on their own and pay their fee on their own. So, they would take our paper copies, scan it in, PDF it, and send it over. And so, this is going to take away that middle man. We'll just load it all up for them. So, a lot of the districts around use it, and they all seem very pleased, so.
What's the turnaround time when someone requests a transcript? Current student, in the time they request it to the time that they get it, either paper or electronic?
In the fall, they were doing the, we were doing the audit, the double checking, so we weren't ready until about two weeks before they were due. At that time, we did a mass mail out. So, in the fall, if you requested a transcript before the deadline to the universities, we weren't ready yet because we were still conducting our final audits. So, now, it should be a short timer. And I don't know, but I'll find out and send it to you on a Friday update. Okay? But we made our, all of our transcripts where the students entered on the forms, I was told that we made all of those deadlines.
Well, do you guys just make it an audit every year?
We will do a, what we do, I foresee us doing a percent audit, like we do in our testing files and our writing samples and things, where we say, this year, we're going to audit, you know, ten percent. And we'll do a random ten percent of those students and audit. We're going to always be looking at those students that have those Singleton courses or those weird things like the sub-athletic sub-band to make sure that they're correct. The other good thing is that once this is uploaded, the students can go in and audit their transcripts as well.
I think overall, we've done a really great job of getting it better, you know, in terms of accuracy. And I know personally, as a parent, I haven't had any problems ever getting the transcripts. We've always done the early admissions. So, we've always been able to get them a long time, and they've been current. I think maybe as a learning tool for our counselors, a lot of students at certain universities either want to do the early admissions, or there's certain, you know, like Texas State has a program that some of our students at Littleham tries to get into where there's a certain deadline. And so, those students that have a certain deadline, maybe, maybe the counselors need to be, you know, teach the student, it's a student's responsibility that they need to start earlier, not go a week before. Because then it becomes, well, the school didn't get me, but, you know, he's turning it back on the responsibility as they're growing up. But I think you guys did a great job overall, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'll let the council know.
I know last year, it was brought up, about the emailing of transcripts. Is that possible to get your transcript emailed?
We don't email transcripts because they have to have the certified seal on them, and it's also, can be a violation of FERPA. It goes to the wrong person because it has classified information on it. I think that what, last year, if I remember correctly, we were using a system called T-Rex, and we were having a hard time getting Focus to connect with T-Rex, but we are connected with T-Rex now. In fact, that's how the school in San Marcos, Texas State, requires all of the transcripts to go by T-Rex. So, we successfully submitted all of those. So, it's not email, but it's a, it's a protected system that's encoded.
I think that was spelled good, but it was the electronic transfer.
Right, electronic transfers, yeah, transfers. We are able to do those with those schools that accept them.
Is there anything I can say? Thank you for the staff. I know this has been a long road, certainly, of time, and you guys have basically made the progress that we've made and started this process. Actually, it was a long road to get to where we are. I'm very impressed with your, my cautionary, connectivity, which allows the management of electronic transfers, particularly at all costs of students and all costs of districts. So, great job.
We continue, we know it's never over. The process is never over. So, we will continue working on fixes for the little, little things as well.
Thank you. Next up, graduation update, two thousand and sixteen.
Yes, you asked at the Board meeting for an update on the two thousand and sixteen graduation date, which would be for next year. This year's is set at Prestonwood Baptist Church. And we're in a queue at both U N T and Prestonwood Baptist Church for two thousand and sixteen. How this works is it's kind of interesting, because I didn't realize it either until I became part of this curriculum organization. But, and looking at high school graduations is, we don't get to call the vendors, in this case, Prestonwood and U N T. We put our name on a list, and we're queued, and it goes by district. So, if you have a district ahead of you in the queue, which is what happened last year, because we had a prime slot of Saturday morning, but a district ahead of us added at least one high school. Well, what happens when they go down the queue, and they go down by the years that you've been with them, seniority, basically? And so, they got to this district ahead of us, and they said, well, we've added a high school, so we need an additional time. So, that's how our Saturday time got taken. So, we are in the queue. We don't call them, they call us. And they will typically call us one year and before. So, we're looking for those calls end of May, and so, we will have an update for you then. But we are on the queue for both Prestonwood and U N T. And then, we will look at what both of those dates look like and look at what's going to be the best one for our students and our community.
Any questions?
Very different. Very, very different. I do know this year, when we tried to get in with U N T, we were basically going to have to graduate two weeks after our students graduated, which is why we didn't go with them. But the cost difference is quite a bit between the two. From a financial standpoint, we'd like to get back with U N T, but it just hasn't been possible. We are in the queue, we'll see what they offer us this year. It's a, it's a prime timeout there. There's a lot of private schools, public schools competing for the same venues. And so, as soon as we get, find out what we have, then we'll, we'll let you know what the high schools.
Have we ever considered using our stadium?
We haven't. We actually considered that this year, and we put it out to survey to the families, and it didn't go over. The issue is, and we can work with this, and we've been talking with Dr. Stride, we don't have a facility big enough here in case it rains. So, if it rains on the graduation time, our option was to move to our auditorium, which would be giving one parent one ticket. And then, when we do an overflow, live streaming to other areas, that would, like, we could put a hundred in the lecture hall, we could stuff, you know, three hundred chairs, four hundred chairs, maybe, in the cafeteria, but you wouldn't physically be able there and seeing the student walk. Dr. Stride has let us know that some of the big school districts, South Lake Carroll, that has their stadium, instead of just having that one time, they'll say, this is when we're going to graduate, this is our first time for graduation. If it's going to rain at ten o'clock on Saturday morning, we're going to look at Friday night at seven o'clock. We're going to look at two o'clock on Saturday. We're going to look at Sunday morning. And so, the graduates or families are given in that three-week, three-day window, different timeframes of possible graduations when they do their stadium. And he said that they've been, they've successfully have had an outdoor graduation at their stadium, doing it in that method. And that was actually a method that we hadn't even, we hadn't even thought of. We just were going to move it indoors. So, that is still an option, and it would be very low cost.
Is it going to be indoors, or is it?
It is indoors. It is indoors. And they, they have it set up for all of the different schools, and you come in at your timeframe, and then you get out because they roll another school, a school in. So, they have the students on the floor of the basketball court, and then everyone else in the stadium.
So, we can just, plenty of room. Tell them by, by the family.
Yeah, there's plenty of room, yes.
When do you think our ten straight, their capital, about graduation?
We were thinking that, on the average, we were thinking last year, on the average, was eight to ten family members per student. Some had less, some had more. So, you're looking at about four thousand.
Last year was a bigger class, and this year's the smallest class. Yeah.
About four thousand?
About, we're looking at about four thousand. Even with Prestonwood, we can stay at Prestonwood a few more years and be okay. It's, we're feeling it up. But there's just not that many facilities that we can, that, how is that looking?
Cindy, her comment, I told him this morning, leadership team, we were talking about this, and I said that in my last position, was my most dreaded job, was having to get a graduation venue. Fortunately, we worked up with Fort Worth Convention Center, but when there was a chance that they may tear it down, we had to look ahead. At U N T, we were number twenty-six on their list, which basically meant we would never be able to graduate there. And several venues were built in that area. U T A built one, immediately filled up, they would look four years out. And it's because all these school districts start adding campuses, and they will push you down the road in terms of where you're able to go. Cost-wise, I will make one mention, what they told me that we will pay for Prestonwood is over three times what I paid for two graduation classes, minimum outside. So, we're paying a price to go to a private venue, which makes sense that we're going to pay more for it, but we're still at their mercy, even at what we're, what we're willing to pay or having to pay to be able to have a place to graduate. And what created this problem, I should say compounded the problem, was common calendars. With the first start date having to be the same, with people having basically the same calendars, everybody ends up getting out of school at about the same time, within a couple days, which creates part of the issue. And we, last year, had to move our two graduations to two different nights, a Tuesday night and a Wednesday night, because they just hosted at Fort Worth Convention Center, the state Republican Convention. And so, they took over the whole venue that entire weekend, and Keller got pushed clear out because they did theirs online that weekend also. So, it's just, it's a dog-eat-dog world, and you're trying to get out there and find a place to graduate. So, it's, if you get a place, you kind of keep yourself in line, is my understanding, is we gave up U N T a while back.
We gave up U N T three years ago, and we got back on their list last year. So, now, we're at the bottom of the list. So, I don't, I don't know. I don't know until I know.
And again, it's back to districts adding, adding schools. You got Devon coming online here, which still have to graduate a class in one, three years, and it just, those campuses just suck up the time.
So, I guess the question is, is that the opportunities in mind?
Contendence in mind?
Yes, so if, if Prestonwood and U N T, for some reason, are not there?
We're not on the, we're not on a list for anyone else, so we're, we're pushing with Prestonwood or, or U N T, or, you know, we'll, we'll consider the stadium with the rolling dates or rolling times as Dr. Stride has suggested. So, we can look at, we can look at getting on a list of other venues. It's just traveling. How much do we want to put our students in a car, traveling down to the venue?
What was the biggest concern when we did the, I remember the survey, and they really wanted Prestonwood on Thursday. Well, they wanted, but they, well, they preferred to put on Thursday over the Saturday morning at the stadium. What was the big, was it the heat, weather, what?
It was the chance, it was the auditorium, and that's moving them into the auditorium and only possibly, because we were upfront with that. We said, these are our choices. This is what, we're going to do Thursday night at Prestonwood, and it is a Thursday night event. Or, we can do a Saturday in our stadium. And we said, but if it rains, we would have to limit the tickets to the seating to one inside the auditorium, and then additional tickets for the outer, where we would be live streaming. And I, and I think that that's probably, probably what it was, more so than the stadium event. It was that we were going to be separating families from the graduates.
Do you think we could, maybe another survey with the rolling, with the rolling times?
Yes.
We checked the survey, what, what we did was we set one on Friday night, that was graduation. If there was bad weather, then you went Saturday A M., Saturday P M. time number one, Saturday P M. time number two, Sunday P M. time, stayed away from Sunday morning, Sunday P M. time one, P M. time two. So, you might do a, you know, a one o'clock, a three o'clock, or a seven. And we, a couple times, had to roll to the second time, but we never went past that. The biggest problem there is not, was not so much the rain, it depends on what happens with heat. Because you've got grandparents that are showing up that, you know, come in and it's so hot sometimes, if you happen to catch something other than one of the P M. ones like a Saturday afternoon, you could get all hot, plus you'd have to hand it cancel within a team on top of it.
I'm sure Charlie have a complication. What's that?
It's not big enough.
Well, and the areas of the houses are bought to your age or am graduates at this time about the end through this new graduates, at an alternate time, you're splitting your class, but I can see we can work with that.
I haven't thought about that.
Just to piggyback on this one of his comments, there was a lot of, or that's the only, talking about the case, and the survey went out, basically, this is, and I'm sure, but this is very educational for me. So, I think it's a moment of education, parents, in what we. So I think it's important to be educated, and what we, we don't pick a place. And I think actually some of the places we've created over time. And I think it's important before we move to even state, that it's not forever, we had to do that, because we don't have a choice. I think Mr. Horace has a really good point on communicating out to the community of, "These are our options that we have, and this is a really important selection that we make." In that way, you know, they're more, they're able to understand and see what they're making.
Okay, and my cost, that it's, congratulations, very expensive, we have it at certain venues.
Well, you know, you could, you know, if there was a move into the state, the costs is all, you would try to be in our state.
Other than renting some sound equipment, renting some chairs, that's about all you have, chairs are about $2 apiece, and some sound equipment for $2, $3,000, that's kind of all we have.
Which means we think that the money traditionally for Prestonwood, put that into something very nice event, for a case, which is pretty, you know, upscale, that, you know, parents is like, like a really nice event, so, options. What would look forward to, your options in the next one?
Didn't I think Pat was taking good notes over there to make sure he's being careful?
All right, anything else?
No, this is the, this Cindy showed, so she's still up. And we'll see her again after.
I am front center for a while.
Go tonight, that's great. Any more graduation topics? All right, who wants to next, Dr. Strike, Cindy?
Okay, we're going to bring to you an update that you requested about the opportunities for internships and practicums and what we're doing with those students in the community. But first, I want to show you a video that Cecilia Jones and Tasha Sheen had worked on together to produce about our offerings at CTE.
Career in Technical Education is a knowledge and industry skills-based program. It allows students to experience and gain relevant and specific content in real-life work situations they need to be successful in their future pursuits, both at the post-secondary level as well as their careers of choice.
I've learned how the production process works. I've learned how to edit, put together videos, collaborate, learned how to do special effects, which are really cool. I've learned how to put on like huge productions, like Shattered Dreams.
The graphic design class gives the students a basic idea of the programs used mainly in the graphic design business. We concentrate on the Adobe products, we do Illustrator, Photoshop, InDesign, and Flash. This is called Business Management. This class is a very unique class. I feel, I've taken about six CTE courses in my high school career, and I felt that this class, honestly, this class is the most real-world application for me. In this class, I've dealt with more business, more people than I've ever done in my life before. I've had three jobs, so I've done odd jobs around the neighborhood, I've worked with a variety of different people. And in this single class alone, the first semester, I've dealt with those people and even some more people.
The first class that a student should take coming into the CTE business course would be Principles of Business, Marketing, and Finance. It's a semester course, and it's basically an introduction to business.
We're doing a global business project where we pick a country and we talk about like the conditions of the country and how to do business in that certain country. Say you want to do business, like my country that I chose was Ireland, you know, you get to learn about like what agricultural products, so if you want to do like, they do a lot of farming with potatoes, so, you know, maybe if you want to make money there, grow potatoes. Or, and they speak Gaelic, which is Irish, so if maybe you want to get ahead, learn to speak their language, easier to communicate with people.
I've learned a lot of marketing skills because this class, the class we are taking, I am taking is a marketing class, sports and entertainment marketing. So Mr. Huttley helps us a lot by bringing his own experiences to the class. He doesn't really teach out of a book, per se. He helps you with like the real-world stuff, like what is going, actually going on, not what the book says.
If you're interested in finance, you may be interested in one of the finance classes at the high school. We offer Money Matters, which will teach you about credit cards, how to balance a checkbook and reconcile your bank statements. If you think you want a career in finance, or if you want to own your own business, you might consider taking accounting. And then there's also an advanced statistics and risk management. So you could graduate high school having three credits in the finance thread, which would look great on your college transcript.
You learn how to set general journals, you learn how to do your ledgers, do trial balances, balance sheets, all that. With me personally, I'm wanting to be an accountant. I want to major in accounting and finance in college. So this would definitely give me a head start for what I'm wanting to do and what I've been wanting to do for a long time.
I teach education and training and human services career clusters. Education and training, you can learn about careers in all types of education. So if you want to work in professional support services, like being a school counselor or a school social worker from becoming a teacher, or even an administrator. And we learn about all levels, so from pre-K until post-secondary. So students learn all about those careers and skills that they can use in those careers.
There's a club called FCCLA, and I am the president of FCCLA, and we do things with Brent Elementary as well. And they've actually asked us to help them while they do PTA meetings, care for the kids and stuff. So I get to talk to the kids, I get to help with, help the kids, and so that's been helpful.
I wanted to be a psychologist, so I obviously need to be able to communicate with people. I can't just look at a story one-sided, I need to be able to like understand what they're saying, being able to clarify, not from just my point of view, but their point of view. I think a CTE class is not only good for a profession later on in life, but it's also good for just life in general.
The Health Science Department at Little Elm High School is about showing kids the unique opportunity to explore healthcare careers. They get to work in admissions, nursing, respiratory therapy, radiology, physical therapy, environmental science, healthcare admissions, pharmacology, all the different avenues that hospital and pharmacy careers offer.
Hosted teaches those leadership skills and helps us prepare for our future careers by taking us on leadership conferences and showing us how to do things.
I've been in law enforcement for the past two years when I was a sophomore and now a junior. The first year I learned more about their codes and the laws that they follow. And this year I've had more hands-on experience, like arresting this fellow right here.
Career in Technical Education. Find your career pathway for the future of your success in the many classes offered at Little Elm High School.
The students and all the CTE teachers work with Cecilia Jones and Tasha Sheen had to get that produced, and it is up on our website. We have been showing it to the students as they are doing their course selections, so that they could have a foundation of what some of those different areas that we offer. Today I'm here to share with you the internship and partner update. All right, so we look at what we offer. We have marketing, arts making, nutrition, health sciences, and education and training, are the different areas that we offer our practicums and internship center. Our first one is arts maybe, and we have one student participating in a internship there with ACME Films, and he works 10 hours per week, and a certification that he will have with that is Adobe. Our next one is education and training, and we have a junior. He was working at Lakeside Middle School, 10 hours a week, and they'll come out with their OSHA-10 certification. Our next one is quite large, as you can see, marketing. We have 26 seniors, 29 juniors, seven sophomores, and one freshman. And there is a lot of different organizations that they're working with. And for this particular certification, they have to have 15 hours per week. And they'll come out with their professional sales certification. In health science, we have nine seniors that are currently participating in this. The majority are at Forest Park Medical Center. We also have some students at Walgreens. If they're at Forest Park Medical Center, they can test for IV certification, their CCMS, and their OSHA-10. And then at Walgreens, the difference there is the CCMS, they're coming out with a pharmaceutical tech certification, which allows them to work as a tech and a pharmacy. So we also do outbound career experiences with our students, knowing that not everyone's going to have a one-on-one internship or practicum that's exactly where they want to be, doing what they want to do. And so we work with several organizations who outbound experiences, and these are whole group, probably what we used to call field trips. But they're very specific for CTE, with very narrow focuses. And so these are some of the areas that we go into, do whole group. We've gone to the AT&amp;T Center with the Dallas Cowboys. Their AT&amp;T's head world headquarters, Baylor University School of Medicine, and so on. So we've listed all of those there for you. We also have, and several of the students talked about this, with our leadership organizations. And we currently have four that we support, DECA, HOSEF, FCCLA, and the Law Enforcement Students Association. And these students participate in contests and events through these organizations. And we've had some successes this year, as Cecilia and Pat have been showing in our weekly newsletter. In fact, last week we had sports trainers who went out to be at a competition. And so we had a sophomore that did quite well there with the ankle wrapping. So this is just a, to let you know, we really are doing, I don't think we, like you said in the past, we haven't communicated well, that we do internships and we do practicums. And so we're going to do better with that and focus more on how we can let them, our community, our parents, our students know what their opportunities are. In order to actually get into the internship and practice stage, you have to have an articulated sequence of courses. And so you can't just be in, the one student said he had taken six different CTE courses, and this is the one he liked best, I'm thinking, I wonder what his articulation course sequence is? And has he ever, it's the actual piece where he gets to do an internship or a practi- and he said, I believe he had to be at a three for that. And so, which means that you would have to have three in a row in order to move into your practical internship. So typically, that's juniors and seniors. But with us moving our principals' classes down into our middle school, we actually will start to see students that are entering high school as a level two for their freshman year, which means that they would be able to enter their practicum or their internship quicker. Any questions, Karen?
I think one, one question I know just off the record that Ms. Hardy and I were discussing by email, I guess, is that 65% of our kids on the last Texas Academic Performance Report, called the TAPER for short, 65% of our kids at the high school participated in at least one CTE course, and that represented 1,127 students. And as mentioned, it's been pushed down to the middle school. They don't separate that one out, but just do some numbers. It appears to be probably a pretty high percentage, maybe close to 50%. Would that sound about right, Tasha, from what I've done? About 548 kids is what I show off the last paper, is participating even at the middle school level. So you take six, they add combined, that's a pretty good percentage. And I will say, I went back and compared that, that's higher than the state at both middle school and the high school level. So we're doing a great job of offering and serving kids and still got room to strengthen that, which we're on a course to make sure that happens toward the next few years in terms of getting our kids college and career-ready, both, which we probably need to communicate. We're talking about that this morning, leadership. And what does it mean to be career-ready is a different definition today's world than maybe when I went to high school. And so we need to have those kind of conversations. And certainly the certifications are a big piece of that, but congratulations to Cindy and Tasha and her department and all those people. What causes kids to go into those classes are many of them were the instructors that we saw up there. It's not just about offering a quality program, but those are elected. Kids show up for algebra, they show up for English, but these courses, they make a choice. And if you have the quality instructor that we have, I know in at least two or three of our programs, kids are going to sign up because they know they're going to get great value of it because they have a choice, and they choose to be part of that. An instructor drives that a long way, so we're very lucky to have some of the folks in that area that we do.
Thank you. Any questions, please? At this time, the board will be set into closed meeting. Information throughout the room as committed by Texas Open Media at Code Subchapter 551.074 at 7:00.
In front of you here, the list of seven donations, actually eight, or $800.
Any questions, we're on this donation.
What was the description for the first one who says mortgage lending program? $400, was that just...
I will, I'll have to write it in the morning to...
I'm going to make a stab, you can get the writing inserted eventually, but some of them...